Seven oh one, I'll call a common council meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Decker.
Here.
Gallops.
Here.
Gasky.
Here.
Iverson.
Here.
Bremer.
Here.
We have a call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda, Mayor.
Second.
A motion by Doug, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. No one has signed up for public comment. So I'll move directly into accepting informal reports from standing committees and staff. Is there a motion to approve those as published?
I'll make a motion to approve as published.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by David, second by Mark. Any discussion? Julian?
I don't need to pull this report. I just want to say that it was really neat to see the news of the signs that the Parks and Rec Department having collaboration making with the high school. It was neat to see the paper run that, and it was just neat to see community partnerships being celebrated.
Well, I'd just like to make note of the April monthly report from the police department that Officer Lazern was given a combination for work with the ICAC for Internet Crimes Against Children investigation. So I'd like to cite the officer for the hard work.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the reports? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting informal reports from standing committee and staff as published, say aye.
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 Opposed? Those are approved. Next is the consent calendar. This consists of council minutes from April eighth, sixteenth, and twenty-eighth, as well as a certificate of appropriateness for two twenty Watson Street. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as published?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as published.
I'll second it.
By David, second by Doug. Any discussion? Julian?
I don't need to pull this report. I just want to say that it was really neat to see the news of the signs that the Parks and Rec Department having collaboration making with the high school. It was neat to see the paper run that, and it was just neat to see community partnerships being celebrated.
Well, I'd just like to make note of the April monthly report from the police department that Officer Lazern was given a combination for work with the ICAC for Internet Crimes Against Children investigation. So I'd like to cite the officer for the hard work.
All right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda, Mayor.
Second.
A motion by Doug, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. No one has signed up for public comment. So I'll move directly into accepting informal reports from standing committees and staff. Is there a motion to approve those as published?
I'll make a motion to approve as published.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by David, second by Mark. Any discussion? Julian?
I don't need to pull this report. I just want to say that it was really neat to see the news of the signs that the Parks and Rec Department having collaboration making with the high school. It was neat to see the paper run that, and it was just neat to see community partnerships being celebrated.
Well, I'd just like to make note of the April monthly report from the police department that Officer Lazern was given a combination for work with the ICAC for Internet Crimes Against Children investigation. So I'd like to cite the officer for the hard work.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the reports? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting informal reports from standing committee and staff as published, say aye.
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 Opposed? Those are approved. Next is the consent calendar. This consists of council minutes from April eighth, sixteenth, and twenty-eighth, as well as a certificate of appropriateness for two twenty Watson Street. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as published?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as published.
I'll second it.
By David, second by Doug. Any discussion? Julian?
I'll just say that it appears that the check marks are all in the right places from the voting. I know that that was an issue in the past, and there was some concern that it would be hard to fix, so thanks for the work that went into clearly fixing it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Approved. All right. We'll move into our first agenda item, which is the State Highway Twenty-three Reconstruction Project Design. We have with us Chuck Carroll from Meeden Hunt, the engineer's on the project. And, oh, there it just popped up. And we also have Ryan Erdman is joining us from Wisconsin DOT. Just a second to re-log in. Was there earlier and then disappeared. All right, so Chuck and Ryan, if you would like to give your presentation before we get into questions.
All right. Thank you. Sorry. IT set me up for failure here. Computer restarted out of nowhere. So I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Ryan Erdman. I'm with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. I'll share my screen here for a minute. I'm the project manager for Fond du Lac County and handle all the Wisconsin DOT projects in the county. Thanks for giving us the floor tonight to talk about the Wisconsin Highway Twenty-three pavement replacement project. And its limits are, there's two different segments, and it includes improvements on West Fond du Lac Street from Union Street to Jackson Street, and then on Jackson Street from West Fond du Lac Street to Blackburn, and East Fond du Lac Street to Meddlemen Street, or on East Fond du Lac Street from Meddlemen Street to Douglas Street. I'm going to pass it over to Chuck Carroll here in a minute with Meeden Hunt, who is the project manager for the design consultant, go through some of the details of the project and the proposed typical sections. But I'd just like to kind of highlight why we're here tonight. We can provide suggestions regarding safety and efficiency of the state highway, and how the design might impact that. But there's different aspects with these typical sections regarding, like parking is a perfect example, and that also has implications to the municipality's budget. So we wanted to get your viewpoint on the impacts of each different typical section. So Chuck's going to present some information and kind of give some pros and cons of each typical section. So with that, I'll hand it over to him. Thanks again.
Thanks, Ryan, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and Adam for inviting us tonight. And I'm trying to figure out Zoom here, so let's see if I got this right, and I should be sharing the typical sections on the screen here. This is in your packet also of the agenda material back in there. I'll be talking through the graphics, but all the information that I'll be highlighting is on this portion of your handout that's called the Typical Section Alternative Summary and that. So they go hand in hand. So as Ryan said, we've got a couple different sections of the Highway Twenty-three through the city of Ripon. So starting out at the northwest end at Union Street down to the curve at Jackson Street, this is what the roadway looks like today. It's forty-eight feet from the face of curb to the face of curb. It's four eleven-foot lanes, a narrow terrace, three and a half feet, and sidewalk is four feet. This is the existing one, and in each of those sections will have the existing one or a status quo as a base case for comparison. If we can keep it as it is today, or we can make changes to it. One thing I should highlight for all the options, for all seven options we'll go through here tonight, all of the curb ramps will be reconstructed and brought up for ADA compliance, and all the sidewalk outside of the curb ramp portions that'll be upgraded. That sidewalk is to remain as is unless it's impacted by some form of the construction operations like installing water laterals or something like that. So the sidewalk you see here on the typical sections will remain as is unless we have to, you know, take out a panel or two for a water lateral, or it's by a curb ramp and we have to adjust the grade to make it compliance for the grade on the sidewalk. So this is what we called Option 1A. The number stands for what section it is, and Section 1 is from Union Street to Blackburn. Section 2 is from Meddlemen to Douglas. And that, so 1A is the existing section there. No on-street parking, no bike accommodations. The bikes have to use the lane like a vehicle. Pet accommodations are what they are today, so there's really no improvements made if we keep this section besides all the pavement gets replaced. So the other alternative for the stretch from Union Street to Jackson Street is Option 1B or the two-way left turn lane. The face-of-curb-to-face-of-curb dimension is two feet narrower than the four-lane section, which means we can up the terrace, get a little bit more terrace from three and a half to four and a half feet, so we get a little bit more clearance from the face of curb to the utility poles that are out there on both sides of the street. Some of the benefits are, it provides a bike lane on the outside, so bicyclists can feel more comfortable using the road than what they are today. There's also less lanes for pedestrians to cross. When they do cross the road, they can cross one into the middle and then cross the other direction. The dedicated left turn lane also helps in reducing rear-end crashes and left-turn crashes that happen out there with the four-lane type of facility. It also calms traffic and provides more consistent speeds with the one lane. Like I mentioned, it increases the terrace width for clearance to the utility poles. And the bike lane also has several benefits that are on the bottom of the summary. It gives a defined space for the bicyclist to ride. It also doesn't force a car to change or shift out of the lane to avoid a bicyclist like the four-lane section does. It also would help to reduce any numbers of bicyclists that are using the road or the sidewalk today or the gutter pan. It puts them out in their dedicated bike lane. A couple other things that it helps with, instead of the vehicles needing to turn from right tight to the curb when they're turning into a driveway or onto a side street, they're five feet out, so it helps increasing the radii for the driveways and side streets for vehicles such as buses, garbage trucks, cars that are turning in and out of driveways. And it also gives a little space for temporary store, space to, you know, a car, if it's disabled, can pull over and people can still get around them without blocking a lane. Or we're just coming out of winter here now. We finally got the sun out, but in the wintertime, it's a little place for snow storage, too, until it can get cleaned up. So that's the two options in the section from Union Street to the curve at Jackson. Then as we go into downtown, today it's forty-eight feet from face of curb to face of curb. Basically, it's a twelve-foot drive, twelve-foot lane for the vehicles and a twelve-foot parking lane, ten-foot of pavement and two feet of gutter, so you've got twelve feet there. To emphasize why that's important to know that dimension is because the community is responsible for the cost of the parking lane, not the two feet of the gutter, but of the parking lane. And that, there's no bike accommodations again, so the bikes have to use the lane out here or the little bit of space between the parked cars and the cars in the lane. Pet accommodations, there's no changes to the pet accommodations. They maintain the same as what they are today, but some of the potential benefits with, you know, the parking lane on this option is we can do a bump out, possibly a bump out where the crosswalks are to help minimize the distance for pets to cross the roadway and make it a little bit safer. Now, when we compare the next section for the piece from West Fond du Lac to Blackburn, face of curb to face of curb is the same exact dimension. It's forty-eight feet. However, what this section does is it narrows up the lane by a foot. It narrows up the parking lane from twelve feet to eight feet, which then gives room to provide a five-foot bike lane in each direction. So the benefits here are now you have a dedicated space for the bikes to use in this section of the street, and then you still could do bump outs with the parking lane. The bike lane benefits, like we mentioned before on the other section, you get all of those benefits. But the other advantage of this one here is the cost to the city is reduced by about forty percent for this section of roadway because of the cost of ten feet of pavement in the other section to only six feet of pavement here because it's the eight feet of parking minus the two foot of the gutter, which is six feet. One thing I forgot to mention back here and to be all upfront and open is with the twiddle option or the two-way left turn option in Section 1B, there would be, while there's no cost to the city for 1B, there would be a reduction in annual connecting highway aids of somewheres between three thousand to six thousand a year, depending upon, there's a potential law change that would reduce that amount down to three thousand. And that, so I forgot to mention that there. But going back here to 1D, the downtown piece, the narrower parking lanes would also reduce the city's cost share for the project down there. And that's what the dollar signs are on this cost table. It's just to give you a magnitude, a relativity between the two of what the cost would be. We haven't actually calculated the cost, so we can't tell you it's going to be five dollars or five hundred thousand dollars amount, but we can tell you what relative cost between the two are because it's based upon the width of the parking lane. Then when we go to Section 2, which is Meddlemen to Douglas Street, again, this is the existing section that's out there today. It's forty-four feet from face of curb to face of curb with a twelve-foot lane and an eight-foot parking lane. There's no bike lanes. Again, the sidewalks for pet accommodations would remain the same. We would still have the potential to do bump outs at the crosswalk because of the parking lane air portions of the street, and the terrace is five and a half feet. And all of these sections here from Meddlemen to Douglas, you know, we've kind of broken it in in conversations with the city staff. Meddlemen to St. Winchellus and then St. Winchellus to Douglas, or excuse me, to Sullivan and then Sullivan to Douglas Street. You can choose the same option for all three of them. You could mix and match in between there, so I'm just kind of keeping that in mind. So then when we go to 2B, it says St. Winchellus to Sullivan Street. This one here is forty-four feet, again, the same face-of-curb-to-face-of-curb dimension. However, it removes the parking from the north side of the street, provides a dedicated bike lane, reduces the lanes by a foot to eleven feet, and has parking on the south side. The rest of the dimensions and the terrace remain the same at five and a half feet and the sidewalk at four feet. Benefits of this one is you get the dedicated bike lane versus the section before it. The bikes have to ride in the parking lane or out with the vehicles, so when we look at 2B, they have a dedicated space for them to use. Again, you can get a bump out on the south side of the street at the crosswalks because of the parking lane. And this one, because there's no parking on the north side compared to the 2A section, the existing section that's out there, the cost to the city would be roughly fifty percent of the cost of parking on both sides of the street, the option 2A. Then the last one is Option 2C, is basically no parking at all on the street. It narrows up the street from forty-four feet face of curb, face of curb to thirty-eight feet, so it's six feet narrower. With that, you end up with a twelve-foot lane for driving and a five-foot bike lane and then a two-foot gutter. So you have dedicated bike lanes. The benefits for the pedestrians are the crossing distance at the crosswalk is shorter because you're six feet shorter, so less exposure. The terrace width goes from five and a half feet to eight and a half feet, so you get a little bit more room there between the curb and the sidewalk. Again, the sidewalk stays as is except for where we have curb ramps that need to be reconstructed to bring up to ADA compliance. So that's a real, real quick overview, summary of the various typical sections. And like I said, all of that information is summarized in here. So the last column, talking about the city cost share, so like downtown, the 1C option, which is what's out there today, is sixty percent, or excuse me, is forty percent more than 1D. And then you can kind of see down here, 2A, 2B, that for parking on both sides versus parking on one side, you get fifty percent of the cost savings, and then if parking is completely removed, there's no cost to the city for the pavement in that stretch of the project. So with that, I will turn it back over to Ian and Adam.
Yeah, I'd just like to interject that first segment from Union to Jackson. We would kind of recommend the 1B option, that is the two-way left turn lane. With that, it accommodates the current and future traffic needs, and it's providing the additional benefits over the four-lane section. Like Chuck was mentioning, the additional turning width, the safety benefits. It's the dedicated left turn lane and reduction in right-angle crashes. It's a narrower footprint, allowing shorter crossing distances for pedestrians. Has that traffic calming effect that Chuck did mention, more consistent speeds, and the increased terrace width to help provide, well, to help avoid some of those utilities. And on these options with bike lanes, I'd like to highlight something that Chuck said in the public involvement meeting. We have minimum shoulder widths, so a lot of that bike lane width would be there with our minimum shoulder width. So essentially, the only difference in cost would be the cost of those pavement markings for the bike lane.
So I can just, before we start, so in your packet, there's this information and recommendation ultimately to, this is just tonight a decision on the typical sections. There's a public information meeting. There was also a, for elected officials and other city officials and community members. There's any more public one that was held. Feedback was received from the public. I put a copy of that meeting, so you could see a similar presentation about this. And while there certainly are questions and discussion points that will continue to come up about this project, including intersections, stoplights, things of those nature, tonight, this conversation and decision is based on the overall typical section design. So it's just, you know, we can certainly ask questions about those things, but those won't be determined tonight. Ryan and his team and Meeden Hunt will continue to work through feedback and look at options for some of those more specific intersections and other elements of the project.
And Adam, I could kind of highlight the summary of public comments that we've received through May ninth. We've received three bike lane positive responses, and then regarding the elimination of on-street parking to save city costs, we've received one in favor of eliminating the parking. And regarding, well, Douglas Street intersection control, which is not part of the conversation, we received a couple of comments on that. And I think that is mostly... Yep, that's... Those are the comments revolving around the typical sections.
All right, we'll open it up for questions from the council. Mark?
Yeah, I have two questions, then one comment. My first question is for the, what's on the screen now, the typical two-way left turn lane. Is a fourteen-foot center lane a typical width? Is that just set by the guidelines, design guidelines?
The normal width is fourteen feet. They don't recommend going down much narrower than that because it gets a little crowded in there if you go down to, say, twelve feet. The max is sixteen. So fourteen is the normal range that we use for width in the center turn lane.
Yeah, I suppose it gives you a good enough offset for any two cars that are trying to make a left turn at one time.
Correct.
For that. And then I had a question on why does the 1D typical section, if you want to switch to that, why is the bike lane not protected by the parking lane? I know there's lots of discussion around that, but I'm just curious if there was a reason or a stronger reason why for this typical section it was chosen or presented this way.
If I understand the question, I want to make sure I'm on the same page with what you're asking there. When you say protected by the parking lane, to put the bicyclists instead of between the cars and the vehicles out here, between the curb and the cars?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. This is the normal setup that we typically see in Wisconsin, and that's kind of what our standards are here. I have seen places where it's been behind here, but I've also seen it where there's been a separate curb between the cars, the bike, and then another curb. And that, but typically, it's out here in Wisconsin.
I can imagine that's helpful just for, because bicyclists do have the ability to take a full travel lane that they could then move out into the lane, but it also helps in snowy conditions and parking that that bike lane isn't going to be used as much. So the parking lane tends to impinge on the bike lane instead of the travel lane then.
Correct. And I've heard people when they say about back here, and I'm not the bike expert, I'll be the first one to admit that, and that, that some of the disadvantages back here are people just tend to open their doors without looking because they're by the sidewalk versus on this side, they're looking to see if there's a vehicle coming. So you might unexpectedly pick off a bicyclist if it was between the curb and the vehicle.
Yeah. Yep, and then I just had one comment. You guys mentioned quite a bit about shortening crossing distances across lanes with various ways to do that, such as just lowering the face-to-face curb width or having bump outs or certain accommodations. I think that's a great idea. Anytime that we can get pedestrians out of the lane of travel and kind of shorten that time is good, so.
Steve?
Yeah, I have a question on, if you've lived in Ripon for a little while, you'll notice that there's a lot of semi-trucks that come down this road, especially downtown in the city here. in the city here. And a lot of them have a lot of trouble making turns in the city as far as down on Blackburn Street and going down Fodellak Street after they're off of Blackburn Street. Their trailers tend to run over the curbs and stuff already, so if you're going to put a bump out there, that could be a bad day for them. I mean, they're already knocking over lights and stuff once in a while already. Even with a turning lane, I don't think that's going to help them because they swing way out the way it is downtown here. So I can't see where putting a bump out is going to help them at all, and that's the way they have to go. They have to follow the state roads evidently. So that was my question is, I can't see a bump out, even though it's for safety reasons for pedestrians, that would be beneficial to the trucks that run down there.
If I'm not mistaken, at the corner of Blackburn and Jackson, when you're coming from the west, turning onto Blackburn, there already is a bump out there.
Yeah, and they're still running over that curb. So you can't really go too much farther than what they already have.
Yeah, to address your question about bump outs, don't take it as saying we're going to put bump outs in all the corners of all the intersections because one thing that we will do with the design, once we know what typical section is being preferred by the city, and that we will lay things out and then we will run, we got software that simulates a truck that drives through here to make sure that we have enough room because I agree, they have tight turns here because you can see the curbs all marked up with rubber already making that corner and that. So we'd like to put bump outs in, but that doesn't mean we're going to put bump outs in in every corner because we still have to make sure that the traffic can use the road. It's a balancing act, so don't take my comment about, there's, I think I said there's a potential for bump outs. I didn't say we were going to put bump outs in everywhere when I was going through the discussion of the typical sections.
Doug?
Well, I have a comment. Isn't there a recommended truck route to take Douglas to Oshkosh and then bypass downtown so they wouldn't have those tight corners? Isn't there a suggested truck route already?
I believe that changed when they rerouted Highway 44 away from Oshkosh Street.
Oh, okay. I know it's been a while. The other comment I have, and I know you said you weren't really going to discuss this tonight, but I want to make a comment about a potential traffic light there at Douglas Street and 23. And I'm wondering if you could read or look at the traffic count again, maybe in the summertime, because I don't know when you looked at it, but I've gotten some comments of that it should, it is higher in the summer, so maybe a traffic light really is needed there. And I realize we're not really, we're not getting into that tonight, but if you could consider that as you go forward with this design. Thank you.
So maybe a couple different questions all rolled into one and one kind of to Adam and you guys. So on 1D, well, kind of like 1C and 1D, I guess my question is, when we move to 1D, we get the bike lanes, we shrink the parking lane, and we also shrink the gutter, if I'm understanding that right, if I'm reading it right. And my question would be, why isn't there an option like a 1E that only has parking on one of the sides, like the other proposals, that would increase like the gutter back closer to what it is at 1C? And then the question maybe to the city is, if this is like a once-in-a-lifetime project, and I understand it's not part of DOT, could we at least like have the conversation in like a cost estimate of, or somebody just say it's a bad idea, but all the other sidewalks are like five and four, and here there's seven. So if those were shrunk to five to match all the other sidewalks, it would give the potential for more green space to match other places that isn't here. So there's a lot of comments and questions in there, but the main question maybe to DOT is why wasn't there a 1E, if there's a reason?
For 1D here, just to clarify, the gutter pan is still two feet on both of these between 1C, it's just how it's measured. This was two feet of gutter, six inches of curb head and that, and this was, this is still two feet of gutter, six inches of curb head, but this notch down is six feet compared to this notch down being 10 feet. So from this white line to the face of curb, this option is 12 feet. This option here, from the white line to the face of curb, is eight feet. So the gutter is the same. From sidewalks in a downtown perspective, the state standard for when sidewalk is tight to the back of curb, it's a minimum six feet. And then because there's doors and stuff from the buildings, the commercial buildings on each side, you need to have a one-foot offset to where your five-foot pedestrian access route is for all the pro-wag, that's the ADA accessibility requirements. And then you have a two-foot area that you have in there for signs and hydrants and utility poles as such. And so that's why it's seven feet out there today from that aspect. We kept parking, from a design team, we kept parking on both sides because there's businesses on both sides of the street and downtown unless the city wants parking removed on one side like the other options outside of downtown.
What is that? It goes past Roadhouse?
Yeah, it goes past Roadhouse and then right past City Hall here. So, yep, so I mean, and there are times where this area is fully parked and, you know, we just didn't want to eliminate parking in front of businesses that are used to having customers park right there.
And that's this stretch here.
There's some elements and some crossings and things that will improve in here. There may be some things that we can't have parking, so we may be able to enhance bump outs or enhance things around areas where, but that's, you know, this typical section, keeping it on both sides is advised.
Julian?
I just want to make sure I understand, so keeping parking on both sides is advised in this area in front of City Hall downtown, but isn't this part of the one, the option one, where it's advised to go with the center turn lane and that would eliminate parking? Or can that change? Am I missing?
The recommendation in the staff report is to have the turn lane up to the, where the highway turns, where it splits, one lane goes downtown over the hill, one lane turns onto Jackson. That's where the turn lane is recommended to stop and come into downtown area with 1D.
So even though, I feel like it was presented as one section west of town and one section east of town, we're actually talking about three sections?
Look at your spreadsheet. The spreadsheet is broken up into sections within the section.
Okay, that makes sense.
So if you look at the screen here, they have pulled up the green.
But then shouldn't there be like option one, option two, option three tonight?
So from Union Street to Blackburn Street is one, and we've subdivided that into two sections. So if you look at the coloring.
That's what I mean, it's two sections.
Yeah, so if you look at the screen here, the green is from Union until where Jackson Street turns to the left, and the yellow is Jackson Street to Blackburn.
Yeah.
So what the recommendation in the staff report is, in the green section on the screen, is to have option 1B. In the yellow section, it would switch to option 1D.
Yes, okay. I get that from that thing, just right now, it seemed like we were only voting on two different sections.
There are two main sections, and they're both subdivided. This one's divided into two, the other section is divided into three.
Okay, then my other question would be, in the areas where there is not a terrace, so if I look, for example, from 1B to 1C, so in these areas where we're losing the terrace, we're losing some green space.
Currently, there, where 1C is currently the Jackson Street segment.
That's all hardened, there's no soft.
There is no green space on 1C currently.
I got it.
So 1C is the current configuration with the recommendation to go to 1D.
Just a tangential comment. I know it gets out of the scope of the meeting, but at some point, are we going to have a conversation as a city about the next west section of 23, if we want to go to two left turn lane on that section so it matches up, so we don't have people merging from two lanes down to one, one lane to two? I know it's outside of the scope of the session.
No, I think Ryan may be able to speak a little bit about the work that has to be done at the intersection at Union to kind of make that transition easier for people. So that's certainly an improvement that has to be made because it does go back to a four-way. I'm assuming the traffic patterns and just the timeline for that road to be reconstructed is many, 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 many years down the road. But certainly, they have that whole intersection they're looking at.
I'm sorry, I missed part of that question. Were you looking for me to respond to something?
No, I'm looking for an answer, Adam answered. It's just that there's, and Bill and I talked about this too, and this was our concern, just that intersection there, just making sure there's a transition from, you know, going from now four lanes to four lanes to the twiddle to the four lanes and vice versa at that intersection, just making sure that there's, and then bikes, obviously, there are not bikes on that west section. So we'll have to just design that out, and that's why that's highlighted there.
Just a comment on that. Was there any discussion about making the Oshkosh onto 23 West a kind of a right turn merge with a, you know, a single lane and then an added lane? Or is that, I mean, that's maybe a bit much reconstruction for that area? I don't know if that was discussed as any part of the, I know we're talking about typical sections, this is intersection specific, so maybe we can wait and discuss it later, but...
Yeah, and that's actually outside the limits of the project. It gets a little convoluted because we're so close to the intersection that we're required to update the curb ramps. So we're doing the curb ramps and intersections, but technically, it's not part of the project.
You're not changing any of the roadway or anything?
Right.
Yes, okay.
So any change?
Chuck's, oh, I'm sorry, but Chuck just drew a line roughly where that pavement joint is, and that's the limits of the project, that's the limits of the pavement replacement.
So the change from two lanes to the twiddle will occur pretty much at that red line?
As, if we decide to go with the twiddle, then we will look at how we need to transition it, and maybe this line, you know, shifts a little bit down farther to make it work or back, but we'll have basically the same four-lane configuration at the intersection with the signals and that, and then it's the transitional curve in here of how we do that. We haven't designed that out or laid it out, you know, because we don't know if we're going with the twiddle or not. That's why we're talking tonight to see what the city's preferences are and that. But we are confident that we can transition it into the intersection and out of the intersection safely. If we couldn't, then we wouldn't be proposing it.
Thank you.
Steve?
My last question is, this is in the city of Madison, and I don't understand why it's going to cost more to have the four lanes there as we have it now than if we put the bike lane in. I don't know how many bikes run down Highway 23, I've only seen one or two. Most of the time, people go on the backroads. I don't see.
Well, I will respond just to the bike portion of that comment.
Yeah.
I've heard from many people last few weeks saying that they would prefer to take a bike lane on 23 to running through all the neighborhoods. They're going through the neighborhoods now because they don't feel safe on 23.
How many people were that, or was that?
At least a half a dozen have come to talk to me about that.
All right.
What was your other part of the comment?
That was the only question I had. I couldn't understand why it's cheaper if we put a bike lane in than if we have a four lane.
It's not.
Doesn't make sense.
In that, in that section, there's no cost difference. The cost is the cost because there's no parking lane in that section.
Right.
That section is purely from a design preference perspective, what the city wants to do. There's really no cost implications on that, on 1A, 1B down on that side.
All right.
Other than the reduction in potential state highway, which is a few thousand dollars.
And one more benefit besides having the bike lanes, coming to the 1B design, should studies have shown that this type of lane design should slow traffic just naturally and reduce speeding on that section?
And we'll just add to that, in talking through this, just for consistency, if you're going to add a bike lane in front of City Hall here and then you end it, right, it doesn't necessarily create a nice transition either. So you're kind of picking it to go throughout the project and piece this together as well because, you know, you don't want to cut people off, so.
Doug, then Mark.
So just to respond to Steve there, for probably a decade on a Saturday morning in spring, summer, into fall, there's been 15, 20 cyclists flying past me on Benton Street, going around. One morning recently, last summer, I went up to Mups and they're all blurred, and their cycling gear, their bikes parked there, and they weren't on 23, they were bypassing that as much as possible, going through a neighborhood, and which I would have to say would be less safe. Because it's a neighborhood, you're not expecting to see 15 or 20 cyclists flying down your road, and you could back up and hit somebody. So to me, 23 with a bike lane would be much more preferable because you're used to backing out of that traffic, you're looking, look better, I think, to look, be more careful when you back out. So I've seen lots of bicyclists around the city not going on 23, I imagine, because it's not particularly safe for them. So I would go for the bike lanes.
Mark?
Just on the left, with the left turn lane in the middle, I would have to imagine if we haven't gotten any comments from our residents on that street, that they would also really prefer to have that left turn as they're trying to get into or out of their driveways because it should, as referenced, the incident of rear-ending should go down because you have that separate lane, which I think would be beneficial as well.
Julian?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that when we look at biking in this area, I think that there's a lot of reasons why, I love the idea of the city sort of embracing it. There is a, you know, a push for biking from Green Lake to this area. Our former colleague who was on the council was a huge fan of biking. Ripon College, a number of years ago, made national news for providing bikes to all of its students. Again, this was unique to our area, and the complaint from students was there's not very many bike-friendly areas. Now, we've grown that since this time, but this is another commitment to making this even more so. You know, I can't imagine that 30 years from now, we're going to see gas prices going down. If anything, I see the future of being more people biking. I think if we think about our local citizens, if we think about, we do have a college here, they do have a lot of bikes, and also with the advent of electric bikes, I see more people wanting to use these. So I just think it kind of future-proofs our city into a friendly family community. And I think in order for us to think about how we can fit that into... and I think in order for us to think about how we can fit that into it, it's important. And I think that the comments that, well, I don't see that many bikes now on that corridor, it just, it makes no sense. I know I don't feel comfortable biking there, because it feels unsafe, so I don't think it's inaccurate, respectfully, I don't think that that comment is, you can put much weight on that, because if you don't feel comfortable somewhere to say, I don't see many bikes, it doesn't make sense to then justify saying they wouldn't go there, because if they felt safer, then obviously, they would, would go there in the future. So, now, are we saying, do we want to kind of say, so if we want to put together what is sort of recommended, and then we can disagree or agree, are we going to take each section by vote individually?
You can do it all in one, however you want to do it, it depends on the consensus of the council, and certainly, the recommendation is, is in front of you. The only note I will make about the second section, because the other section's gotten a lot of attention, is the parking, and the recommendation there is to eliminate street parking on all sections, except Wentzusloss to Sullivan, which would be on the south side, due to Ingalls Field, as well as that corridor where there's lumberyard and Quick Trip and the machine shop there, that's more of a commercial corridor. So, we are recommending that on that south side, there remain parking for those businesses, but the remaining parking on that street be removed.
Here's my question, that's, I was actually, I was trying to like look up my map, I'm like, what? But why, so Ingalls Field, I don't know if I really think that there needs to be parking there, but why do the businesses need, because they each have their own parking lot, like the machining, Quick Trip?
I, I will say, for the, for Quick Trip and the machine business there, oftentimes there are semis, like for Quick Trip, they park on the street, because they can't physically get into the lot, to go in and get their lunch, and for the machine shop, they will park on the street to find out where they actually have to pull in to unload. So, this will remain a spot for them to park.
Yeah, I've seen more than once, numerous times, a semi just, you know, pulled over, parked with its hazards on, they either jump out to, to go, you know, use the restroom at Quick Trip, or figure out, yeah, same thing, to figure out the best way to get up and around into the side streets there.
John?
Do you want actual motions to accept things tonight? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, yes, we would like to give DOT and everybody guidance on what we're doing.
I will make a motion to accept option 1B for the stretch of road from Union to Jackson Street.
I'll second that.
Or take them one at a piece at a time?
Yes, do it.
All right, so the motion is to take option 1B from Union Street to Jackson Street? Any discussion on that motion? And that motion was made by John, seconded by, was it Jonathan?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion?
I think it's, it was pretty clear from the documents as to why this can be safer. We do have our police chief here. Do we want to ask, I mean, does he agree that this would be safer? Do you want to weigh in? Is there anything, or just, you know, okay, I respect if you don't want to weigh in.
Certainly, yeah, I mean, it looks like a discussion, I think we're almost there, so certainly, yeah.
Don't screw it up.
Yeah, don't screw it up, right? Sometimes it's better to say nothing rather than anything at all. Yeah, I'll just give you, you know, there's a couple of things that, that come to mind for me, the reduction of four lanes down to two lanes for pedestrian traffic, that's been talked about. I did pull some traffic data from that area, specifically in reference to this section that your motion is about. So, between, or the last five years, we've had about 12 crashes in that area. One of them was bicycle-related, and that was due to the bicycle crossing in a crosswalk across four lanes. So, you know, that's, that's some data for you to kind of absorb there. You guys had some discussion tonight about that transition, city administrator and I had some conversations about that, so I'm interested to see how that transition comes together, that plan, because we've not seen that. So, obviously, that's on the table yet, from that, that aspect. But as far as anything else in regards to this specific section, I don't really have too much to add. I will note, I did some research on this. City of Appleton, I believe, went to this type of design for their downtown section. They had the same thing, they had four lanes of traffic down there. They went to this option, which basically is a three-lane, two lanes, you know, each direction with a twiddle in the middle. That reduced, and I think they did that in 23, 24, the first year, that reduced their accidents by 48% in that section, which I think is a significant number for them. The, the road diet that you see here, DOT has on their sites, and the research that I've done, that it generally will reduce that accident, those accident numbers by anywhere between 20 and 40%. So...
And to comment towards the Appleton change, as a frequent utilizer of that section of road, it actually, as a user, is easier to use than when it was four lanes.
Yep, so, again, when it comes to accidents down on this section, you know, the intersection there with the stop and go lights has a much more propensity for accidents, and has much more of our attention than this section, and the way this is lighted out, I'm fine with that. So, I'll address the other sections as you talk about them if you want.
Sure.
Any further questions or comments on this section of road? Hearing none. All those in favor of using option 1B for West Fondleix Street between Union Street and Jackson, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation for 1D for Jackson Street.
Motion by Jonathan, seconded by John. This motion is for the Jackson Street stretch to be option 1D. Any discussion here?
Are we saying 1B?
1D as in dog.
1D, okay.
Chief, if you want to give your...
Yeah, the only comment I have about this section, because it really doesn't change too much, other than the addition of the bike lane, is that certainly, we'll have to see what the design looks like for this crosswalk, right in front of City Hall. That is a heavily-used crosswalk. We do have some parking that's probably going to have to change in front of City Hall because of that crosswalk, that may not be what we want to see, because right now, if you look at that crosswalk, there is parking right up to the crosswalk, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't have that. That crosswalk in particular does generate us a lot of complaints, people will often walk in and complain that vehicles don't stop for them, so we'll just have to see how that design changes, or is specified in regards to this crosswalk, but that's the only comment I really have about this section here.
And I will pose a question to Chuck from Mead and Hunt. I assume that your company will work with the city when it comes to where we put parking spots in crosswalks? Is that correct? You're muted. There you go.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, because our cleaning people were vacuuming, so what was the question? I'm in the office.
So, the question is, comes time to design crosswalks and parking spots on this section on Jackson Street, you will work with the city to do those designs and layouts?
Yes.
Okay.
We will coordinate with the city staff and that to get the input.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this section of road? All right, all those in favor of using option 1D, D as in dog, on Jackson Street, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. So, this next section of road, from Matoman to Douglas Street, we have broken up into basically three sections for the recommendation. First section is Matoman to Wentzusloss, then from Wentzusloss to Sullivan, and then Sullivan to Douglas. We could take those one at a time, or do them all together, however you choose.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation for Matoman to Wentzusloss, and then Sullivan to Douglas, just as is written in the paper of 2C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jonathan, seconded by Mark. Any discussion on this section, or we can go to Chief for his opinion? Go ahead, Chief.
As far as these two sections, don't really have too much comments here. Obviously, there's a financial consideration when you talk about eliminating parking for the city, so that's significant in this proposal. Really, what we saw, if you remember, back in 2016, we approached the council and had discussions, lengthy discussions, I don't know if you were on there, on here at the time, about reducing the speed limit, specifically towards the end, towards Douglas Street on East Fondleix Street. That helped us significantly reduce our accidents in that, especially that second section. We were averaging, I think in 2016, we had like 10 accidents at that intersection specifically, and I know we're not talking specifically about intersections here, but since, between 2020 and 25, we, we dropped that way down to 10 during that five-year stretch, so we went from 10 a year down to two a year, significantly because of that reduction in speed through that area. So, that's just a significant note to note about this section in particular, for us.
John?
That section from Matoman to St. Wentzusloss, there's a lot of houses on there, can, say somebody was moving, can a semi get a permit to park in the bike lane, load, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and typically, we work with residents, so they generally will call us and we'll work with them. Matoman Street is a prime example. The entire length of Matoman Street is all, pretty much residential, there is no parking on the entire length of Matoman Street. But if somebody's moving into a house, we will work with them, you know, if they're, you know, temporary parking, you know, obviously, we probably won't allow them to leave a semi, moving semi or truck there overnight, or store equipment there overnight, unless it's very well-marked, because of the no parking and some civil liability issues there, but generally, we work with them, you know, to get the work done, it's got, it's just, you know, sometimes you just got to get the work done, so, yeah, we're pretty good about that.
Continuing on that same thread, if, say, a small package delivery company, FedEx, UPS, has to deliver, just pull over hazards?
Yep.
Make your delivery quickly?
Yep, we continue to allow that, we're not going to, you know, the work's got to get done, so...
Julian?
So, I just want to make sure I understand, I feel like just a few minutes ago, there was a case made about being able to park outside of Quick Trip in this area, aren't we saying right now that the parking is not allowed under this proposal? Is that correct?
This, this would be for the sections of Matoman to St. Wentzusloss, and then again from Sullivan to Douglas. So, we've divided this length of road into three sections.
So, it's not talking about in front of Quick Trip, right now?
Correct.
The next one would be?
The, the last section would be in front of Ingalls Field to Quick Trip. Any more discussion on this, these two segments of road? Hearing none. All those in favor of using option 2C from Matoman Street to St. Wentzusloss Street, and again, from Sullivan Street to Douglas Street, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved. And then the final section, St. Wentzusloss to Sullivan Street.
I'll make a motion to approve typical section 2B, St. Wentzusloss Street to Sullivan Street.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by John. Chief?
Yeah, this section in particular, I know the city administrator and I had lots of conversations about parking, whether to have parking, not have parking, you know, all things considered. That is an area, you know, with the Ingalls Field there, that this community has spent a lot of time and devotion on highlighting, you know, attracts outside visitors to our area quite a bit. There's been some changes to the parking on St. Wentzusloss Street because of the recent construction that occurred there, so we just felt that, and I think it's appropriate, to allow parking through this area. I do like the conversations that I heard tonight from, from the presenters in reference to bumpouts for crosswalks, if, if that's possible, and something that we could look at, particularly the, the crossing right at that St. Wentzusloss Street intersection, that, that's going to get some attention from us coming forward. We're probably going to install some improved signage there next year with the flashing lights, because we continue to see students using that crosswalk through that area. So, just another thing to consider, if you eliminate parking there, you enhance that ability for visual notice of pedestrians crossing there as well. Further on, you've got, again, you guys made the comments in reference to Quick Trip, we do see lots of parking that occurs on 23 there, in front of the Quick Trip store. There are parking at that particular Quick Trip, you've probably all been to that lot, that can get a little tight in there. There are, I think, some improvements that may be coming to that, but that, particularly, we do see a lot of on-street parking in that area. We don't see as much in those other areas that you've already addressed, but this stretch in here, particularly, we do at, at times see more parking on-street.
Thank you, Chief. And just to expand on the changes that are coming to the Quick Trip parking lot, they've just been approved for changing their parking, but it will not improve for large vehicle semi-traffic. It's still strictly just for cars and pickup trucks. Any more questions or comments on this segment of road? Hearing none. All those in favor of using option 2B from St. Wentzusloss Street to Sullivan Street, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved. Is there anything further to discuss on this segment of project design?
Just for the record, the administration supported the motions made this evening.
Thank you. Steve?
One last comment, this, the public's going to know about this, right, all the changes that we're doing? I mean, you're going to have a...
Yes.
A good public meeting where people understand what's happening, because now that we voted on this, I'm sure we're going to get a lot of, well, I didn't know about that.
Approximately two weeks ago, there was a public meeting.
I know there was.
And there will be, I believe, another one here, the end of this year?
Ryan might know when it...
Ryan, when's the next public meeting?
Yeah, there's, there's a second public involvement meeting coming up, I believe, in the fall, winter, winter or early 2026.
Thank you. Mark, I just wanted to say, yeah, we just voted on kind of the guidance, the typical sections, there's going to be a lot of work and a lot of choices in designing that has to go into every intersection, crosswalk, all of those things, so that they can not only meet guidelines for, for safety and traffic flow, but also so they can just physically fit within the bounds of what our, you know, land and what the use is. So, I think we, as a council, will see a lot of the design come through, and, and we'll be able to give the public feedback on that as well.
Thank you, Mark. Ryan or Chuck, do you have anything else for us?
Just wanted to thank you again for providing us the opportunity to speak here tonight, and making quick decisions so we can progress with the design. Excellent discussion, excellent feedback, so a few points that will be incorporated into the design are definitely considered in the design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys for having us and for the good discussion, and I look forward to working with you guys throughout the course of the project. You guys might get sick of seeing us here with everything that we have to do through the next four or five years to get to the time that the project is let for construction, so thank you, have a good rest of your meeting, and see you later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye-bye.
All right, moving on, we have an $8 million general obligation debt short-term financing proposal. Adam, would you like to take this one?
In your packet, you have a proposal, so Sean, our finance director, put together a request and sent it out to the typical banks, that we send it out to, local and, and local banking institutions... that we send it out to, local and, and local banking institutions. So we're looking at an $8 million general obligation, 18-month financing to assist with the continuation of the $5 million for the DPW building. So if you recall, about a year ago or so, we had our first interim financing, what, $5 million through Horicon Bank to begin that project. This would be kind of the tail end, get us through the rest of the project, to then refinance it into a larger debt issue with Ellers. In addition to that, there's $2 million that we would issue for Hamburg Henny. Half of that will be refunded by the CDBG grant, so, so that's just to keep that project when we need to pay bills going, and, and then hold us over for reimbursement. And the last is $1 million to fund tax increment District 16. All of these will be refunded, but the TID 16 funds, generally speaking, will assist with other actions tonight, including the utility relocation, and then the land acquisition that I notified you of all that closed earlier today, or it closed yesterday, with the acquisition of lands in San Mar for parkland development and other city utility infrastructure needs. So the low proposal came from Horicon Bank at 4.75% as their closing costs. So our recommendation is that we accept the proposal from, from Horicon Bank for 4.75% and maturity date of November 8th of 2026. And we will prepare the paperwork and bring it back to you for final execution.
Mark?
Just from a capital point of view, all of these projects and this funding and paying it off has been sort of built into and expected into our budget for not only this year, but will be into the next year as well?
Yeah, generally speaking, you know, the, the DPW garage, we initially took out the first portion. We wanted to, we wanted to then refund that and essentially with the larger 20-, 30-year note, depending on how we finance it or bond. And instead of doing that, you know, we're wrapping these all together. The Hamburg Henny project, again, is in our, was in our capital plan, was in our financial management plan. The only one that really wasn't would have been the TID work, but that happened between, over the last few months. So that will be, again, refinanced into a longer note as well. So all these will be bonded out and folded into that each either TIF district or general obligation debt structure. And there may be different funding mechanisms for each. So we've talked about, you know, going to bond for the DPW garage, but also pursuing USDA rural development financing. That takes it out, not just your standard 20 years, but 30 or longer.
I'll make a motion to approve the $8,000, or $8 million general obligation loan
We wish.
Commitment with Horicon Bank at 4.75% with a maturity date of November 8th, 2026, and zero closing costs.
I'll second. A motion by Mark, second by David. Any discussion?
Just happy to see a local bank being used.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the $8 million general obligation loan to Horicon Bank at 4.75%? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
That is approved. All right, moving on then to San Mar TID 16 utility relocation. This is for a power line that is currently running across the property where the SC Sorestik project is going to be located, and part of our agreement with them was to relocate that power line for, before the project begins. And this is the proposal from Alliant Energy to do that.
Looking for a motion?
We are looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the $188,228.89 to relocate the power line to San Mar from Alliant Energy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Doug, second by John. Mark?
I just had a general question. I don't think any of us will really have an answer to, but why was this utility put in as aerial lines and not buried when installed? There may have been good reasons, but I also would question the Alliance reasoning for that, or whoever subcontracted out to, to install these, because I think generally, for any newer subdivisions, they will bury initially.
I'll just say, looking at the research on this, that easement for that line has been there longer than this development.
Than the development. And I think it's pre-aided development.
And even with going underground, there would be easement restrictions that moving this into the right-of-way, you know, gets it out of the way completely, and just generally helps the aesthetic of the entire area.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? John?
Are the overhead lines just being removed in the area where the apartments are going?
Yeah, so basically, you can see that the line, EUC Pleasant Street here Yep. Village Lane, will run up underground in the right-of-way, and cut back over to, to put into a transformer box that's back there already on the south side, or what would be the north side of one of the lots in San Mar.
So there's still gonna be, if we would ever go to the south with development, would those lines still be overhead?
Yeah, there would be, still be overhead lines to the south.
Okay.
In the, in the drainage area back there, past the senior apartments.
So that may have to be addressed later?
If there's the need for development of the lands back there, I tend to believe with, you know, the lay of the land back there and how it was designed, that there's a less likelihood of that being developed than other areas in San Mar, or in that general area, just because of, you know, the drainage way? All of that.
Okay. And the railroad tracks back there and?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
David?
I understand that house to move into the line, why are we paying for a couple of switchgear, too?
That's a part of Alliance cost in doing this, that's how they do it, so.
Doesn't really make any sense that we would have to pay for that, too. All we wanted to do is relocate a line, not buy a couple of switchgear.
Is it, is it a new code? When they're moving utility lines now, it has to have a certain amount of switchgear? Asking any electrician on staff, any electrician.
He's retired.
Yeah, he's retired.
Once he retires, he could get something. He's just like did light switches anyway.
Any further discussion? No more discussion. All those in favor of approving Alliant Energy's bid to relocate power lines for the $188,228.89? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
That is approved. All right, next up is the 112 Watson Street repair order, including demolition, environmental remediation, and roof repairs. Adam?
So in your packet, you can see there's a staff report, and then also the request for proposals that was issued for demolition, environmental remediation at 112 Watson Street. This is the old, like, radio station collaborative on this space. We have a long history over the past, well, yeah, with this property over the last two years, or kind of a difficult situation going on there that we've been dealing with. Started about two, two and a half years ago, when a police officer entered the structure to find black mold and, and water in, inside the structure. The property owner, there's been some transactions, been some, or attempts to sell the property. Those have all failed. There's liens on the property. The property is also in the tax foreclosure process at the county. The county has tried to work with the property owner to allow them time to sell the property. That wasn't necessarily realistic, based on some of the liens and the overall condition of the property. So the county has suspended their previous effort to, to foreclose on the property. And as I note in the staff report, they have a meeting in July where they will decide if they pursue INREM and tax foreclosure with a hearing. It's my understanding that they likely will do that. However, I've received some just feedback that the county doesn't always take properties that are in bad shape, because then they become their property, right? This property is in a state of significant dilapidation and decline, and we had initially issued a repair or raise order, I would say about a year and a half, two years ago. Those efforts were suspended because of the county's INREM process. When the county suspended their INREM process, we picked back up on our raise and repair process and issued a repair order about 45 to 60 days ago or so, giving 30 days to fix the conditions of the property as documented by our building inspection. So the police department, we, we went in, made sure the building was clear. We have secured the building. We cleaned up some junk on the outside, but the inside remains, as you can see from the pictures that are shared, those are from our last, the last time being inside of the property. You can see the overall decline. So with the expiration of the repair order and the property owner essentially leaving it in a state of abandonment and is nowhere to be found, we have come to this point where we need to discuss our enforcement actions and acting on the repair order. And generally speaking, Craig T. Bond is here, but Main Street did have some interest in the building and was working with contractors to put some quotes together. We've worked with some of those contractors to receive quotes. So we issued the RFP as a way to get some interior demolition and cleanup done. We received proposals from four vendors or four contractors, the low being, I believe, 920 restoration for $16,000. Let me just get to it. $200?
$300.
$300. And so we've done, we've done the asbestos testing, so then $16,300 is the low bid to begin the demolition of the interior. There were other bids provided, but obviously, more money. You know, I talked it over with 920 Restoration, and I'm comfortable with recommending that they start the work. Part of this is the cost to do this. At $16,300, it's significantly less. It gets us started, and the TID in the downtown area would cover this cost. We would then assess whatever's back to the property, which then gets collected through the same processes, taxes, by the county. So these bills will be forwarded to the county for collection. We are walking that fine line between improvement and cleanup. We want to stay up in, in the repair phase, not the total improvement of the property. If this gets approved, we will continue to pursue quotes and proposals for the roof. I have pictures of the roof as well on the property, and I have, I, I have seen the roof. We wanted to try to repair the roof. The roof is beyond repair. The roof had been repaired, not well, and at a point where it was already in trouble. So there, there is no membrane. They have tried to cover it. There are blocks in it, obviously. Having water drip into the property from the roof, fixing the roof is important. However, the inside and the cost to address it at $16,300 is a comfortable action in administration's mind to move this forward and begin improving this property, because I'm fearful that if we do not take action, that this will become a longer drawn-out process, and we will be looking at other issues if, or other, raising the billing, right, as an option, if the county continues to not foreclose on it, if this continues to drag out. So I just feel it is time to act before this gets way out of control, and it is already one of the worst situations many of the contractors have seen. And hopefully, we can begin working toward preserving this, because the fear of having to tear it down is a more costly effort to have to expose buildings next door, so on and so forth. So you kind of open a lot of unknowns if you go that route. So preserving the building, there is value there, and we hope that we can kind of kickstart the revitalization of it by doing some of this, but ultimately, that's down the road. We have to, in my opinion, begin saving it before it, it gets way, way worse.
Steve?
As I understand it, the county owns this building already, right?
They do not.
They do not?
No.
Okay. Legally, can we go in there and, oh, you know that? You're a lawyer?
You know what? I almost have it back.
Well, good for you.
So let's
Legally, can the city go into that building without being partial owner or have anything resolved before we do that?
It's in your packet, under order to repair building, under the section entitled Failure to Comply. After this has been served, after the 30 days have expired, if you refuse or fail to comply within the time prescribed by the authority granted under 66.04131F Wisconsin statutes and Ripley National Code Ordinance 1824.010, the undersigned or other designated officer will cause such buildings to be made safe and sanitary by public agency or by controlled arrangement with private persons, being the bid that you are considering tonight. The cost of such repair of the property will be charged in full or in part against the real estate upon which such building is located and will constitute a lien upon such real estate and shall be assessed and collected as special tax. So what that does for us, Steve, is just clearly spell out that we're not going in there for the fun of it. We're going because it constitutes a risk to the safety and health of the public.
Well, I understand that.
We have a reason to enter, and it's spelled out as part of this order to repair. They were given an opportunity to appeal to the circuit court. They failed to do that, and failing to do that put us in a position to do this. And again, it's important for the council to understand, we are not going in there to make this property better. We are going in there to protect the public. That is our sole purpose in entering. And the city administrator, by pointing out that the roof is completely failing, is another reality to this process that we're going to have to deal with. Once we get in there, we try to control the mold and, and other problems that have developed because of the condition of this property, and as the city administrator pointed out, the risk of us just tearing it down and exposing the other two adjoining buildings does not make sense, so we are intending to do this, and obviously, the bid that we received is significantly lower than others that are going forward. So it's the least cost to protect the safety of the public and the adjoining property.
Well, I understand what you're talking about.
Okay.
It's, I just wanted to make sure.
No, it's an important question. It's a very important question.
We were not the people that, you know, the city wasn't the people or persons that have to fund this and not get the money back.
Right, and that's the point of it. Going against the property. Going against the property, the county made their decisions.
Right.
Of whatever, for whatever reason, we're not the county. We have a duty to protect the public health and safety and that's why it's on the agenda tonight. So I incur that the city administrator brought it forward and the order to repair versus raise, we're not asking to knock it down because that's going to create greater problems for the property owners and the city. So we're just asking to repair to the best of our ability to mitigate the risk to the public. Good question. Doug?
First of all, Steve, I'd like to apologize for interrupting you. I shouldn't have done that. Second of all, I think it's important that we continue to move forward with the raise and repair and if the roof is something that we need to have an order on for this building, I think we ought to go through it. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the bid of $16,300 from 920 Restoration to start this mediating the raise and repair order that the property owner is just not going to do that. And I'd also like to suggest, in the future, if we need to keep doing this, that we do so for the health and well-being of the neighboring buildings and of the public at large. So there's my motion, whether that be acceptable there.
So your motion is precisely to accept the bid?
The $16,300, precisely from 920 Restoration.
Thank you.
The rest was diseditorial, my guess.
Is there a second to Doug's motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mark.
I have just a question. Jonathan? So the, look, fit for habitation use, whatever, however the ordinance is written, right, there are three of them. And so I understand the...
We're not taking the property.
No, I get it.
We're not taking the property.
I get it.
We are making it safe.
We're saying it's out of disrepair, so you need to fix it according to that ordinance.
Right, that's all we're doing by this action this evening.
Building, I think we own by the library, right, the old barn, is also unfit for use, right? When we went into it, they were like, you need to, you know, like that building, don't walk around on your own. So I'm saying, we've picked this building to say, you're unfit for use, but we have a building that we've also said, shouldn't we be making this same statement to ourselves then, that we need to fix that building?
If I can draw a distinction between the two, that building is unsafe to go into and walk around. This building is unsafe for the neighboring buildings and people walking past because of the amount of mold in the building. That mold can grow through the walls into the neighboring buildings or escape into the air, out the hole in the roof and through the walls. So while we do have issues with our own building, this issue poses a greater threat to the public at large.
And I'll just make the distinction that that is not a habitable structure. That is, that is a old barn, essentially.
But you can make the case that no one's using this either. That's vacant, this is vacant.
Yep, but this has neighboring properties next to it. That is, if this declines to the point where you have it to be torn out, you're exposing sidewalls and façades that may not have the appropriate... So you're opening Pandora's Box to a lot of issues that with neighboring properties, as well as the property next door is for sale, you look at valuations, you look at all of these issues, you walk by the property, it was unlocked for two years. You could have just walked in. You know, this is a downtown property. This is our Main Street. There is a big difference between that and the old house for a restable in terms of its use and its utility to the community.
I think we're going on a good plan. Once we get the inside of that cleaned out, even if the roof still is leaking a little bit, you're going to minimize the mold because right now the mold is in the ceiling tiles, in the wood, it's in, if there's carpet in there yet, whatever. So I think that's a good price. I think we should jump on that, $16,300.
Julie?
Adam, can you confirm that it said by May 9th that they will send the insurance and workers' comp? That they have indeed sent that?
I can work with them to get that after this is done, so they haven't sent it because they didn't know they were getting the work. So I will work with them to get all of that taken care of.
One question, and I don't know if Lud can answer or Adam. Is there a long list of people waiting for money on that building?
So I'll just say...
I mean, besides the county?
The county, so where it is today is the INREM is north of $25,000, $26,000, $27,000.
In taxes.
In taxes. There appears to be a private lien on the property due to a failed land transaction or a failed land deal to the next door property that's been applied to this property. And I'm not going to speculate what that amount is, but what I have heard is it's in the tens of thousands of dollars to the point where the existing liens on the property from a tax lien perspective and the private lien equates to approximately just shy of the assessed value of $130-some thousand dollars. So, and I believe that part of the challenge when it was last listed, there were offers in the range of paying off the back taxes, but that additional private lien was the main reason why it could not be completed, the sale, because it didn't satisfy that.
So do you think we're setting ourselves up to not get this $16,300 back?
I would say that from, the distinction here is the way in which we collect it through the taxation process. Generally speaking, Fond du Lac County makes special assessments and special charges hold and then they collect it through the INREM process. So that is different than the private lien process or a civil judgment. As far as I'm aware, it is, it is different. If the county decides they don't want to pay that, then I would assume that they're not going to pay anybody's special assessments and taxes that are rolled to them in the county because they can't just pick and choose. So they have a choice to make, just like we do with this. At $16,300, you know, we're not, we're not, you know, picking $50,000 to fix it with a $50,000 roof, yeah, we're talking a lot of money. $16,000 is a lot, but tearing it down and dealing with the other issues could be significantly more if the county, and frankly, cleaning the property up a little bit may push the county to be in a position to take it because I've been told that they don't want to take a building full of mold, right?
Right.
So there's a lot of things at play and we will let the, we will let the county know every step of the way what we intend to do.
I think that's an important point and we've discussed that previously, that the county had opportunity to finish the process and eliminating that private lien was relevant. I would also note that what we're doing this evening is not raising the building where that would impair the private lien. This, in fact, improves the private lien, quite frankly, by making the property safe and taking care of some severe problems that are going to impact not only this property but the neighboring properties. So it's a repair order as opposed to a raise order. That'd be a different animal and so we're doing this under public police power.
But it will go in that order. It would go county, the private lien, city ribbon?
No, we're going to step ahead because we're going to have...
We'll step ahead of the private lien?
As a special charge, yes.
Okay, that's good. That makes you feel better then. Great.
Julie?
I have a trust that we're going to get the insurance and workers' comp, so, but just in general, Lud, let's just say we didn't, like, let's say we, because we don't have it right now in the motion, that we need that before we begin work and let's just say for some reason they didn't actually have that. Is the city response, are we legally in a bad place? Like, should we put it in the motion to protect ourselves?
Certainly, again, I think, yeah, friendly amendment. Put it in there, subject to producing workers' comp and insurance. It probably is a safe way to protect the city. Yes, you could have some concerns if we don't have that protection.
I would accept the further of the...
To include the insurance and the workers' comp.
To the insurance and workers' comp, so.
Good catch.
Mark, you accept the amendment?
Yes.
So the motion is now to accept the 920 Restoration bid of $16,300 for the services, pending verification of insurance and workers' comp. Any further discussion?
Basically, this company's just going to take everything out of the interior, correct? And it's just going to be a slab in a wall. Okay, which will, and of course...
Clean, hopefully clean it, then it has to...
And then it'll, any kind of mold, anything like that won't be in it.
Not just walk in and...
Okay, all right.
Hopefully they're clean.
So they're in the bid to take out the mold and I don't think there's anything in there that doesn't have mold on it, so I assume they're taking everything out.
Taking everything out, yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the motion to accept 920 Restoration bid of $16,300, pending insurance and workers' comp, say aye.
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 Opposed? No. That is approved. All right, the last item is a request to change City Hall hours for summer hours again. This would be going to Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. and Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is beginning after Memorial Day, I assume?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the change in City Hall hours.
Please second.
Motion by John, second by Steve. Any discussion?
Well, I mean, this is, this is going to go back, we're going to have regular winter hours and this is clearly, we're just the summer hours.
Yeah, so this is Memorial Day through Labor Day.
Do we need that in the motion? No, it's assumed.
It's summer hours.
It's summer hours.
Summer hours.
That's for summer.
I do just want to make that we'll be implementing the summer hours permanently, Memorial Day through Labor Day.
Yeah, last year was a test.
Was the test.
So this...
And it worked out well?
Yes.
Now we want to continue.
It, it's a dead time. It honestly allows for us to do some ketchup work too at times and last couple hours, but also flexibility during the day. And frankly, we see a lot of business owners come in from 4:00 to 4:30 that otherwise we never see because they are working till 4:00, so there is some nice benefits to doing it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of changing City Office summer hours, say aye.
Aye.
That is approved. Any project updates or staff reports? PDE? Naomi?
Yes, we have, Open Book is coming to Wednesday, May 28th, from 9:00 until noon and that's going to be done via phone. If you need to have the phone number for that, look, you can get a call, just if you have social media, it's going to be on the website, so everybody will have this all registered out there so that way people will know who to get on, copy and paste. The Board of Review is going to be Wednesday, June 11th, from 3:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. And then that will be, of course, here at City Hall hearing, Council chambers.
All right, Adam?
You have my report for the month. The biggest thing I'd like to highlight is the library renovation project. We bid it out May 1st and received no bids for the project, so we have reissued and are working to get that rebid. It's been posted for May 22nd bid date and ready for council action on the 27th. That's everything except our second meeting in May. Just mark that on the 27th, not the 26th unless you all want to come on Memorial Day. You have a meeting. No? John, no?
Unless you supply beverages and...
No.
All right, I do not have any appointments or communications tonight. Is there any future agenda items or comments from council?
I know we received at least one bid for the library renovation.
Anyone else? Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jake, second by Jolene. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.